You're gonna have to ask a lot of questions this time.
I don't have a chance.
You're the audience for the night. You're gonna have to ask a lot.
All right. It is seven o'clock PM. We will call our meeting to order. I'm looking for a motion to adopt our agenda because we have all board members present.
Salute.
Second.
First and second, this is Enriquez Pembal. Yes. Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Mrs. Slomis?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We will move on to 1.04, the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to 1.05, report of closed session. The Board of Education met in closed session on May 4th and May 11th for the purpose of discussion of personal agenda items. I don't believe that we have received any public comments. Are you trying to force a public comment?
I'm looking to see if anybody wants to talk.
She's here to listen and take it.
Apparently so.
So we will move on to 2.01, to our reports. Moving on to the President's Report. I was honored to be a part of a special celebration last month in front of Hake Middle School. Rittner celebrated its partnership with St. Louis Children's Hospital Healthy Kids Express Program during a ribbon cutting ceremony for its new pediatric diabetes mobile unit on May 15th. The Healthy Kids Express Diabetes Mobile Unit is the nation's first of its kind to bring comprehensive diabetes care to children, adolescents at their schools. Rittner students living with diabetes and prediabetic conditions who are under the care of Washington University physicians will get additional treatment, management, and support for their condition by St. Louis Children's Hospital healthcare professionals inside of the mobile unit directly at their school. During the last year, the Healthy Kids Express Diabetes Healthcare Professionals have provided diabetes training to all Rittner school nurses. Since February, Rittner students have been getting additional care in the mobile unit during convenient visits at their school during the school day. Our partnership with Children's Hospital and Washington University School of Medicine is important to our district's mission of educating every student every day, and we thank them for providing these much-needed services to our school community. I do want to add to this as well, much appreciation to the Rittner School District for actually being one, the first school district to actually sign their MOU to get this partnership going with Washington University. These are some of the most vulnerable populations, but then also some of the most children that get the most sick with diabetes, and so this is helping them not come to our ED as well, but then also helping their families with the daily management process. So kudos to Rittner for thinking outside of the box and also leading the way for other school districts. Moving on to 2.02, Summons' Report. Dr. Michael Tance.
Thank you. I'm proud to report that Rittner High School's 105th graduating class walked across the stage with their diplomas on June 3rd at Shea Fitz Arena on the campus of St. Louis University. The Rittner High School class of 2023 included 330 total graduates. We had one student, Kyla Williams, who graduated with both her high school and associate degree from St. Louis Community College. Sixteen of our 2023 graduates earned the seal of bilinguism proficiency in a foreign language. Eight graduates will continue their athletic careers next year in college in basketball, football, volleyball, and track and field. And the class of 2023 earned more than 3.2 million in scholarships. We are so proud of our amazing Rittner High School graduates, and we wish them all the best in the future. Lastly, I'd like to introduce to the board Ramon West, one of our new administrators for the 2023-2024 school year.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, I am, I was given a couple of questions to answer really fast, a little bit about me. My name is Ray West, well, Raymond West, I go by Ray. I am coming from Francis High School District. I was an administrative intern for three years. Before that, I was assistant principal at Crandall Leadership Academy in South City for three years. And so, and before that, I was a teacher. I taught first grade, third grade, fifth grade, and middle school over 11 years' time in education. That was the school I grew up in as a child, so that, just a little bit about me. So to the first question that said my philosophy about children and education. A lot of times when we ask teachers this question, they say, "All kids can learn," which is true. They can, can't mean capable. I like to kind of quote the book Lost at School where it says, "Kids learn when they can." So it becomes incumbent upon us to create an environment that breeds success for them. So I'm not just a believer in that. I really live that. I want to create an environment to where students can be as successful as possible, not only educationally, but socially, emotionally first. We say hello to children. We give them food before we start teaching them. So I care about the social emotional. I care about perseverance. I care about grit. I care about all of those big things, as well as, of course, the academic piece. And one of the things that drew me to Booter, that's, I'll be assistant principal at Booter, I know y'all heard that clip. So one of the things that drew me to Booter was in a mission statement that talked about having lifelong learners. That's one of my personal missions is to contribute to cultivating lifelong learners. So it's not just knowing the reading, writing, and arithmetic, but it's about knowing those analytical skills, those critical thinking skills, how to persevere, how to have grit, things like that. So those are two things. So that's the question one, as far as children philosophy. Children learn when they can, so it's our job to put them in an environment that makes it so that they can. And then to the second question, it was, second question was about what drew me to Rittner and what was my impressions. Well, I've been blessed, privileged, and fortunate enough to attend the CBL PD last week and the Elevate PD this week. And so I love how, there's a few things. One of the things I love is how the district is very intentional about not only acknowledging that we are a diverse district, but including those voices. I saw a lot in the PD yesterday and today about not just acknowledging that it's diverse, but making sure that they have, that students who represent different groups have a space as well to voice their opinions or share their talents and share their gifts. So that's one of those things that I take it that Rittner is intentional about, again, not just having diversity and saying, "Hey, we're diverse," but about making sure that those diverse groups feel included and are included. And then with CBL, I just know the teachers work hard. I was just telling Dr. Stewart, these teachers work hard. I haven't even started the day yet. Teachers work hard, 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 hard. And so I want to make sure that I am supporting our teachers as much as possible to make them as successful as possible as well. It's not only my responsibility to give students a space to be successful or create that environment, but also to contribute to an environment for our teachers, our staff members as well. When I say teachers, everybody's a teacher in the school building. The second you walk in the school building, you're a teacher. Custodians of teachers, OPs of teachers, anyone that is an adult that runs across children is a teacher to me. So that's one of the things that impress me. And I'm right now, because I'm new, I'm working on the Student Handbook and the District Board Policies and trying to read through all these things. So I appreciate that it's easy to navigate the website to get to those things. I just know where to go, what to click, how to get to it. Having had that experience and other school experiences, I guess, is the nicest way I can say, like, with other districts, I haven't. It's not as easy to get to the District Board Policy in some other sites. So I appreciate that I can get to it so I can work on those things. That's all.
Great, welcome. You're just sitting there singing our song. You're right there with us.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, welcome. Most definitely what you're saying about creating that environment, you think about just flowers and plants. I'm not, I kill off flowers. However, I do believe that it's about the soil and the nourishment that you give, so that what you're talking about just might have some value in that. So appreciate you being in the district.
Thank you so much.
Really thank you for joining us so early, participating in professional development. You know, this June, I know you were active at the school in the springtime, also participated in interviewing new staff, coordinated with the principal, really contributing everybody who came here. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Did you came from Francis Hall?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I was administrative intern, which it is an assistant, the job is that of being assistant principal, but the titling isn't, and I'm under a, I was under a teacher's contract, so I kind of went at the same time as teacher, so, yeah. It's a little different in terms of titling, but the work is like exactly the same.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, that concludes my report. Thank you.
2.03, hopeful. Our student rep is unable to be with us tonight, so we will move on to 2.04, MSBA. In MSBA report, this is Enriquez Pembal.
Well, as you know, the legislative session has ended, but there is, and I'm sure they'll say it on the video, but there is the MSBA Summer Summit. I cannot attend, but that's happening next week in Branson, Missouri, 16th through 17th. And then we have our annual conference, November 2nd through 4th. So we can start to register for that, I believe. All right, let's play this video.
Welcome to the June edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the legislative session that wrapped up last month. Education issues dominated headlines and talking points throughout this year's session. Despite some proposed legislation that could have been detrimental to school boards and public schools, there were some significant positives to come out of the session. MSBA's Director of Governmental Relations, Brad Shields, tells us several bills aimed at public schools did not cross the finish line this year.
Yeah, some of the takeaways, you know, overall, public education had a fairly good legislative session. There was not a lot of bills that were necessarily damaging to public education and made it across the finish line. There were a lot of attempts, a lot of examples of trying to expand school voucher programs, expand charter schools, and those are the things. They got a lot of attention, but they didn't quite make it across the finish line. So we ended up in a pretty good position to begin with this year. You know, something that really did work out great for public education this session was the budget. And a lot of kudos go to the Senate Appropriations Chair, Senator Lincoln Huff from Springfield. You know, we've fully funded the foundation for them again. Transportation is fully funded again. The minimum teacher pay at $38,000 is going to be fully funded by the state this year. It's no longer going to be the 70-30 match. And then, of course, the $50 million in school safety grants that were Governor Parsons' priority, you know, all those things made into the budget. It was a really great year for appropriations for public education.
Shields says that although the session is over, it's still important for school board members and administrators to stay in touch with legislators and that many of the issues that were discussed in this session will return during the next legislative session.
I don't think that these issues are going away. I think that the, you know, part of the overall conversations happening around public education these days and about whether or not public education should remain a public good or a private good. And I think that is a larger philosophical discussion that's happening across legislators across the country, but especially happening here in Missouri. Now that legislators are back home, they're, you know, away from Jefferson City, this is the time where they begin really re-engaging with their communities. And this is where you, as community leaders, need to step up, invite them to your schools, especially when you come to me and come back to school in the fall. But talk to legislators, talk to them about session, talk about the things that happened during the session and what and how those would impact public education for your district and in their community.
Shields says the advocacy work of school board members paid significant dividends during this year's legislative session and that your advocacy efforts did not go unnoticed in the Capitol this year. MSBA positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the Delegate Assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the Advocacy Committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The Advocacy Committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the Delegate Assembly that determines MSBA's positions on issues. So make your plans now to attend the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials to be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature some outstanding general session speakers along with a wide variety of concurrent sessions, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state. Registration information for the conference will be posted on the MSBA website soon. Past and present members of local school boards can be nominated for the 2023 Paul Morris Community Service Award. This award is for those who have shown an outstanding commitment to local community service. Nominations will be accepted through July 1st, and the award will be presented at the MSBA Annual Conference. On to another important topic, annual Medicaid eligibility reviews that were paused during the COVID-19 pandemic have been renewed as of April 1st of this year. Over 4 million Medicaid participants will be impacted by this renewal, and many have never been through the process. Since schools have direct contact with families, they can play a critical role in making sure their families are aware of the actions required to maintain continued Medicaid eligibility. Declining eligibility could also negatively impact school-based Medicaid revenues as reimbursements for both direct services, cost settlement, and ESTAC are directly tied to eligibility rates within each district. Check the Missouri Department of Social Services website for more information and helpful materials that can assist in communicating this important information. And finally, congratulations to Shontal Abayfun of Republic High School. Shontal is the statewide Belcher Scholarship winner selected by the Future Builders Board of Directors. The Belcher Scholarships are funded through the MSBA Future Builders Foundation, and the foundation has awarded hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships to over 600 students throughout the years. Congratulations to all of this year's regional winners. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in July for the next MSBA Board Report.
Sweet. I did actually think of something as that video was playing. So we did submit, I had asked Dr. Kilbride if we could submit the Early Childhood Center as a nominee for the award, so we did that. And I also wanted to shout out that, yeah, what was said on the video is true about education bills not going through. If you were at the Legislative Action Committee meeting, you know that a lot of that was just due to some dysfunction in Jeff City, and that worked out in our favor for public education. But I also did want to highlight a couple of great wins for early childhood, because that was something that really did win this session. So about 160 million was invested for childcare and early education investments, about 78.5 million to increase childcare subsidies, 56 million for pre-K expansion grants for schools, 26 million for pre-K expansion grants for community-based providers. This is from one of the groups that I'm in called Kids Go in Missouri. So just wanted to highlight that because I think that's very promising and exciting and obviously aligns with our interests in early childhood and our children. So just wanted to shout that out because there's some good stuff that happened too. And that concludes my report.
Next up, the question is the Medicaid stuff. Are we aware of that and what steps we need to do?
So I was actually going to ask that. I know we have some of our team members that are joining via virtually, and I don't know if Julie is joining, but for Medicaid, most school districts are just sending out a notification, just like a blast, to say, "Hey, if you have Medicaid, here's what you need to do to sign up," giving them the general 800 number as well as the link. But I'm not aware if we've done anything like that, because to my knowledge, and I'm, this is why I'm not sure, is Julie on here? To my knowledge, I'm not sure if our social workers actually help individuals sign up through the application process or if they just really give them a telephone number. I don't know the depth of their work.
I think we can do a better job of getting it out.
Say that again? Say that again?
I think we can do a better job of getting it out.
Do a better job of getting the word out?
Yes.
I just think it's really important for us to give that help out to our students and families.
Julie, do you know if there's going to be any type of notification going out?
I can work with that, but not now.
Okay, sounds like you said you worked with someone, so that's great. Yes. Yes, most definitely.
Thank you, sorry.
I do have a question too. They said something about if school boards or school districts wanted to submit anything for position statements. Did they give a deadline for that?
No, they usually come out with that in the summer, because I remember last year, yeah, it was closer to, the deadline was closer to when the actual Delegate Assembly was, like, in October, I think. So, yeah, no, they haven't, they haven't given us a deadline.
Any other questions? We will move on to 2.05, Special School District Report. Mr. Robyn?
So we met Monday evening for the Governing Council meeting. One of the things, June, that they do is do their review of their CSIP. One of the goals on the CSIP is creating a program for teachers to be able to get that data easier right now, and, you know, I didn't realize, poor H. They have to look anywhere to from 11 to 12 different systems to pull all of the information together to try to put together one student's file. And so they're trying to narrow that down. They'd like one, but right now, they said they'd be happy with five. It would be much better than 11 or 12. So they're working hard to get to, get that going. And then, as Dr. Kilbride alluded to, they made a point of telling us that Rittner moved from a Tier 2 to a Tier 3 school. So they're working with Angie and with Julie and with Dr. Kilbride in order to see what exactly that looks like for us and what resources would be available. One of the biggest concerns that they're seeing and is they're seeing big poll outs of certain districts, meaning a lot of teachers are asking for transfers and saying that that is really falling back, this from what they're looking at with their teachers, is falling back on the climate of the schools and the school districts that they're in. And so we haven't had a chance with them leaving town to have some conversation to see what we look like on teacher transfers, SSD transfers out of Rittner. But it is alarming in the fact that there is 13 openings for Rittner for next year, and right now, they've only been able to place five. At least that was how many teachers they had of 13 from Monday's meeting. So there's some teachers going to the Board of Education. She didn't, they didn't know exactly what districts those were. But as of right now, we're eight teachers short. So kind of alarming. Would like to do a little bit of digging in to see if those results are, if there's a climate issue here, if that's why we all of a sudden are 13 positions open. Some of that could just be that it's, and what they explained was some of it could just be people that retired, people. So there's all of that, but there's still, that's quite an opening. It, and it seems to be, from what we're seeing, or at least the map they showed, it's us, it's Normandy, it's Hazelwood, it's Jennings. So all of the North County schools are hurting for people right now. They did a lot of conversation on their budget. They are going to, they passed a deficit budget because their fund balance is so high, and they're trying to lower their fund balance some in the fact that they've had it this high for several years. So there were some districts that were not happy with the idea of spending more. Get it, if they do it wisely and they keep watching it, I think the biggest concern for it right now was the fact that you've got a CFO or COO that, the budgeting of deficit budget that is leaving July 1st to go become the superintendent of Melville and a new COO coming in, and just some fear on some of the partnering districts. Of, do they really have a grasp on what it is? So that was one of the concerns. Then Jennifer left us from the Local Governing Council without a board member. With their, in their last governing council meeting, they had an issue with their elections. So we voted, had three candidates presented to us, talked to each one of them, and the newest board member covering the North County area is, her name is Carmen Staten. So if you hear from her, she's, she doesn't really cover our area, but she's, lives in this area, so she might be reaching out just to touch base. That's what we got.
Any questions for Mr. Eaton? We will move on to our business items. 3.01, we have a memorandum of understanding from Aim High that Dr. Kilbride will present to us. Will he be up here?
Well, I hope so, Miss Hall.
It's kind of broken up.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can, we can hear you now, a lot clearer.
Okay. Board members are here this evening to present to you the Aim High MOU. A summer program of five weeks, plus a Saturday session that's monthly throughout the year. We expect to, Aim High will involve this year. Aim High is at eight grade students spending the summer on the last year. In addition, there'll be a Urica college in Eureka, Illinois, as the Eureka Promise has been expanded to all students in Aim High program who demonstrate financially. The program to incoming kids through ninth grade and the Rittner's Hope that makes up the mention, that's right. The MOU, I think, and board member were asking for approval of the MOU that supports our efforts as a community partner of the Aim High program. And I can answer any question.
Did we get a number of students that first came? Sorry, I have to say. I believe you said 85 students.
Eighty-five this year, sixty students last year.
So sixty students last year and 85 this year?
Yes.
Grade six through ninth?
Yes.
And it's five weeks during the summer, and then the Saturday sessions, they start in August?
Yes, in continuous tracking.
Is it every Saturday or just like one Saturday a month?
It's just one Saturday a month, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Madam President?
Questions?
I have one. I was wondering, does it include transportation or no?
Yes, transportation is included.
Okay. I was wondering, because some people can't.
It's quite an opportunity for our students, and it's good to see that the program is growing. You know, there's a significant growth from six to eight, five, and that's, that's good. Madam President, with that, I would like to make the motion to approve the memo of understanding for Aim High as presented to the board this evening.
Second. We have a first and a second for the memorandum of understanding for Aim High. Mrs. Slomis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Enrique Esquimbo?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, Board Member.
Thank you. We will, we will move on to three point zero two. Michelle will come and present on the new website platform, our presentations. Good evening, Michelle.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight to present our new website for approval. I, we have our vision and then our mission, but I wanted to speak a little bit about how this website opportunity connects with our equity statement. With the emphasis on treating everyone with dignity and respect. And the presentation tonight will show you how we connect with our community, with our staff, and with our students, not only locally, but globally. That is what a website is all about. And we'll talk a little bit about how we will dive a little bit deeper with this new website to offer opportunities for our families and even our staff who, who don't have English as their first language. As well as any of our viewers on our website who have challenges with vision or with hearing. So for reasons for the update, first and foremost, our current website is run by Blackboard. And Final Site bought out Blackboard. So it's going to make our transition a little bit easier, actually a lot easier. It's a mobile-friendly design, which means that it recognizes that, research shows that fifty to seventy percent of people mostly will get onto our website with a mobile device, with their phone, with an iPad. So they make sure that that platform looks great first, and then it will easily transition to the same look on a laptop or desktop. The design templates with Final Site are modern and they're sleek and they're very easy to use. And they're very easy for the content managers in our department and in our schools to place content on their new pages. It's also exciting because we will have multilingual websites. So in addition to seeing it in English, you will have a Spanish, a French, Arabic, Vietnamese versions too. And you'll be able to actually click on the website and everything will be in that language. Our office professional who is bilingual will be able to go through the website and make little tweaks to it. So AI with Final Site will be translating our English content. And Margarita will be kind of tweaking certain words. And what's great is the AI, excuse me, the AI with Final Site in the backend will then use those words over and over again to correct the first time. So, that is nice, nice. As we had mentioned last week, Google Translate is going away. It's not going to be supported. So we will be using what Final Site uses, Webbot, and that is the translator for these new websites. We also have currently Blackboard Ally, which goes through, makes sure that our content meets ABA compliance. And the new one with Final Site is called AudioEye. So that is already built into that. What's nice is Ally tells us that there's problems on the page and we have to go in and correct them. AudioEye makes those corrections automatically. We'll be able to include social media feeds like we do now, but they'll be a little bit more prominent on the pages for our schools. And that kind of just shows a better integration between websites, social media, especially on your mobile devices. They provide training for Jenna already went through a pretty, a week-long training for the upcoming website. And they will continue to give her training, and she will then be training us. And training OPs or whoever the designate is at our schools. So, there's no additional cost for the template that we have chosen. We could have gone to upgrade, but we were just trying to be a little bit conscious with the budget this year. And their, like, their regular templates were just wonderful and easy to use. I can mention a little bit about the AI technology. The CEO of Final Site is all about AI and making life easier. So that was talked a lot about at the conference that Jenna went to. So, the timeline is, if upon your approval tonight, hopefully we would then sign the contract by the end of the month. We would start basically cleaning up the website, basically getting things off the website that are no longer relevant. Making sure all the current pages are up to date, and then we would be starting the migration process. And that would go through November. We'd do a soft launch in December where we won't be pushing it out, but it will be out there. So anyone who goes onto our website will see a new design. And then we'll be tweaking based on feedback from the public on that, and then do a hard launch in January. Any questions? Okay, so we're going to go into the business impact. There is a one-time twenty-five-hundred-dollar setup fee. And then if we sign by the end of this month, we're locked in for only a four percent increase over the next five years. It's a five-year contract. If we don't sign by the end of June, it will be eight, eight percent increase. So. The contract includes the website hosting, our current Blackboard notification system, our mobile app, and then again, the ABA compliance. Up to five languages through Webbot Pro for an additional eight hundred dollars a year. And that is needed for our community. Cost for Blackboard by the last year, just for example, is thirty thousand dollars. And our, way back when, in 2011, when we upgraded to headline at that point, it was twenty-five thousand dollars. So it really has not increased all that much. And our recommendation is that we enter into a five-year contract with Final Site for our website contact, content management, hosting, and mass communication services. Any other questions? I'm really excited about it.
Six months seems like, I guess, a lot to get done.
It, it's going to be labor-intensive, but I'm confident we can do it. So.
So how much, how much support do they give you during that process?
We start getting the pages ready, they will start migrating, and when there's problems, they let us know what we have to correct, or they help us. So.
It's, it's always great to see the, the new information, the new style, the ease, the, the ease of being able to navigate through a website five-three.
Yeah, it's going to be less clunky than it is now.
And so they're phasing out the old, and it sounds like this new platform is just going to be so much of an easier transition, especially with kind of hitting those high points of challenges that we've had with the other format.
Right. And just managing the content is going to be a lot easier. It is a little bit clunky adding photos. You have to crack them. You've got to resize them. You've got to make sure, you know, there's just a lot of steps you've got to go through. You know, putting multiple pictures on, like we used to in our old website before Blackboard, we could have like rotating pictures on like just like a webpage for a story. So it's going to be a little bit better than what it is now. I mean, I'm proud of what we do now. Our website is a trusted source of information for people. But it's just going to be a little bit nicer, make things a little bit easier.
And Jenna will be training the content managers at each of the schools?
Yes, so that is.
Who are usually the content managers?
So some schools give Jenna content and then she places it on. Others, like for their calendars, the OPs will do that. It's really up to the building principal on who they want in their office to do that. So it could be them, it could be an OP. A lot of times, because of the clunkiness that we have, Jenna does a lot of it.
The reason I was asking is because I know, you know, they're ten-month employees sometimes, and so they won't be with you during the summer through this. And then when they start, they go right into getting all the kiddos registered and everything else, and so it's going to be, you know, a busy time.
You know, this summer, this summer, there's going to be a lot of things going on in the background. Everything's going to look the same. Jenna's going to keep updating the website that we see now. And then throughout the year, once we've, once we worked out all the bugs and everyone in our department who works on the website is comfortable with it, that's when we will start reaching out to schools if they want that, if they want that assistance. But the calendar in itself is going to be so much easier to update than what we go through now.
Michelle, you mentioned that Jenna is kind of a train-to-trainer model, but there's support for Jenna even after the launch?
Yes, yes, for all of us. And they have guaranteed that they respond immediately. And when I say immediately, I'm hoping within a few hours right now. Sometimes it stays now. They were, Final Site was the leader for private schools for a long time and have now gone to the public school route, mostly because so many web, so many public schools use Blackboard. That was the leader for public schools. So they're pulling a lot of Blackboard people, training them their way, and hopefully it will be seamless. Hopefully the little bugs that we are working on, no one else notices.
Sounds like you're ready for the challenge. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion. If anybody else has any other questions? I'd like to make a motion to enter into a five-year agreement with Final Site for website content management, website hosting, and mass communication services.
Second. Mrs. Lomis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Enrique Esquimbo?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work. I'm looking forward to seeing the new site.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. We will move on to three point zero three. Appointment of Board of Education, Board of Education Treasurer. So annually, the Board of Education appoints a treasurer. And a member of the board or a staff member may fill this, fill the position. So I am looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dwight Lindhorst as Treasurer of the Rittner Board of Education for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second. Mrs. Enrique Esquimbo?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomis?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Congratulations.
You don't get out of it.
See, see? This is two weeks in a row.
I was prepping you.
Two weeks in a row, right, Dwight?
Yes. It's a record, Dwight. It's a record.
We're going to move on to three point zero four, appointment of the Board of Education Secretary. So I am looking for a motion as well.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. DeQuinda Wood as Secretary of the Rittner Board of Education for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second. Mrs. Enrique Esquimbo?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomis?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. You have to give her one, do that. And also slide to three point zero five, instruction updates, Mr. Michael Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So effective facilities help us meet the mission and vision. Our facility should provide the best physical environment for learning to occur, and our schools should provide consistent and equitable environments. Today I'm going to discuss the Hague Bandroom HVAC unit. At Hague, the bandroom unit has had many leaks over the years. It's caused much damage in that part of the building. It's due to a design flaw in the current system and ducting. We asked TMI to design a solution to properly heat and cool that, that room, which is a great challenge. Solution is to replace the current ceiling unit with an upgraded model. The old one is over thirty years old. The upgrade, there will be upgrades made to the return air system to facilitate proper circulation throughout the classroom and the instructor's office area where that ceiling unit is located. And then we will install a duct heater near the exterior wall, and that will reduce the risk of freezing pipes in cold weather. That's where the pipes are located, is on that exterior wall, and that's why we hit so many freezes in the winter. A quote of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars was provided by TMI. That would, we would use S R three funds for that project. I'm embarrassed to say that I mistakenly provided a cost last week. Last week, I accidentally provided a cost for just one of the subcontractors at fifteen thousand dollars, and that was a mistake, and I apologize for that. Because the board did not have all of the information last week, then I'll recommend that at the July thirteenth business meeting that the board approve the quote of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars for those HVAC improvements in the Hague. I'm happy to answer questions.
Can I ask a question? Is there any reason why we would not go ahead and do this now with it being S R funds? And with also, we know that it takes a while, a while to get things ordered and everything. I'd hate to wait.
I hate to hold off for a minute.
Go back one slide. Go ahead.
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education, let's see.
I was going to say, does anybody have any questions?
I said that, I was going to make sure, because you're right. I get what we're saying, but does anybody have any questions?
I mean, just in case so that people understand it when they're listening, that the big difference was that the original quote was for labor only.
Yes.
And so there's a lot more that goes into this than just the people that are working on the site. And so all of that adds into it, and I think that's very important about what the differentiation between it is.
And the reason that we're willing to go ahead with this is because it takes a long time to get things ordered and lined up, and we'd like to get this going so that our students have as fix as, as soon as possible.
And in addition, it's coming from S R three funds.
Yes.
So this is not coming out of operational budget funds. Now you get it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for calling that out. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the quote of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars for HVAC improvements in the Hague Bandroom. Second. Mrs. Lomis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Absolutely.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Enrique Esquimbo?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We will move on to three point zero six, the Adult Education and Literacy Center, please. Mr. Dwight Lindhorst will come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the Adult Education and Literacy Center.
Uh, so the Adult Education, uh, and Literacy Center, uh, leases space from City of St. John uh on the Rock Road. And this is a three-year lease. Um, so the current lease expires um September, sorry, uh, August thirty-first uh this year. Uh, the current lease is eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The increase would be only a two-point-nine percent increase and locked in for all three years. So the new lease would be twelve thousand ninety dollars per year. And the um, and then we also pay a portion of the utility for building our share. Um, and the rent and the utilities uh are allowable under the grant through DESI. So I recommend that the board approve the, the lease for St. John's for the Adult Education and Literacy Center.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Is, um, is there any plans for us to look at the Husky Support Center as a possible, you know, after three years?
We, we haven't at this point. Um, right now, the, the rooms on the first floor, um, based on what we would like to do there after we get the Husky Health Center moved over, um, if we find a partner that wants to do that, as well as some other uh SEL and uh community supports through uh social workers and different uh other agencies. We think all those rooms will be taken. The other thing is it's important to have a really good bus service for, for the adult ed uh students. And, and the Rock Road is perfect for that. So, and since the grant pays for it, it's really not costing us anything.
I just didn't know if it was something that was in the plan down the road. But I did know that the buses being annual ticket students there is the best part.
Yes.
And I think St. John's would be.
Yeah, with, with rent going up through the roof for residential houses, although probably isn't commercial, but residential housing is just going sky high. A two-point-some percent increase is like nothing. Yes. Yes, that's really- It's very reasonable. It is, it's just, it's very reasonable, and it's very good of them to recognize what we have there. And help us continue with that. Madam President, I would like to move that we approve the lease and authorize the administration to execute the lease document with the City of St. John for a three-year period commencing on September first, two thousand twenty-three, and terminating, hopefully not terminating, but terminating this agreement on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, for twelve thousand ninety dollars annually.
Second. Ms. Swans?
Yes.
Mr. Stargardt?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Ms. Zerigas Pemla?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Very nice.
We will move on to three point zero seven, our budget hearing.
Thank you. Uh, so I'd like to uh go over the proposed budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. And again, uh, we have to have sufficient resources and sufficient staffing in order to reach our vision and our mission. And uh, as equi, for equity statement, we allocate uh resources for, based on student need and not equally per student or per building. When we look at our main sources of revenue, one is state aid. And um, this year, this coming year will be the last year that we can use the greater of the four years of ADA or five years, and it'll go all the way back to nineteen twenty, uh, which was our best year before uh the pandemic. Uh, again, this will be our last year that we can do that. Um, the only difference is the, uh, a slight decrease in the dollar modifier value, and therefore, we're only looking at a difference of about sixty-six thousand based on, on the projections. Uh, tax revenue, the preliminary uh assessed values came in very high. Uh, twenty-seven percent, almost twenty-seven percent increase on residential real estate, twenty-six percent on commercial real estate. And uh, they're not able to give us any preliminary values on uh personal property yet because those are self-reported. But um, as you can see, um, that will uh raise some revenue for us, even though based on those numbers, we'll have to roll back our tax rate by about fifty cents. But still, we will see increased revenue. Uh, that's on the current taxes, prior year taxes. Um, again, budgeting conservatively, the last couple of years, it's come in higher. And so I would hope for that, but not, I'm not budgeting for it. And then the merchants and manufacturing certex um is also a, a decrease. It's been coming in, uh, it's very hard to predict, and this year was, was about three hundred thousand over budget, which is good. So this is the summary for all of our five funds. Uh, as a reminder, the general, special revenue, or Teachers' Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund, we combine those and look at those all at once. Those are our operating funds, basically what it takes to operate the district for a year. But I'll go, uh, I'll focus on the Debt Service Fund first. That pays uh principal and interest payments on our outstanding bonds. You can see that, that has a surplus of nine hundred and ninety-six thousand. Now, there will be some um added uh interest um in March, probably, after we issue bonds, which we uh plan on issuing the other half of the bonds in December, the Prop S bonds. And that leads me to the Bond Issue Fund, which takes those bond proceeds and spends it on buildings, uh, land, buildings, improvements, and equipment. And so you can see the nine, 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 seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh under o, other revenue. That would be the proceeds of the other half of the Prop S bonds. And then right now, I just have five million in, um, on expenditures, but we will update those as the board uh approves different projects. So the operating funds, again, general, special revenue, and capital projects. Uh, this is basically the operations of our district for a year. Um, you can see a little less revenue. Uh, mostly, we don't have all of our federal in. We don't have carryover, we don't have all of our updated allocations yet. So a little less revenue, and then expenditures um a little higher based on salaries, salary increases that the board has approved, as well as all of the other requests that have been submitted by schools and departments. But you can see uh, uh, excess of revenues over expenditures of almost two-point-two million, two million one hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars uh that we're budgeting at this point. So as we went through, we had a few increases. We uh plan on increasing two EL teachers at this point, as well as the increase to the athletics activities, uh, coach and sponsor salary schedule that we discussed last week. And then items that we've removed, um, two elementary teachers, two elementary sections that we, that we, uh, the projections show that we don't need after redistricting, uh, four TA's, as well as one in reading interventionist, one counselor, and one social worker. All of those positions, uh, again, we're starting to draw down those positions that we added with ESER funds as people either resign or retire. So all of those are based on attrition. So we heard the uh concerns from the board about uh those social-emotional learning supports, uh, specifically for the reading interventionist and the counselor and the social worker, and wanted to uh talk about other funding that we have. So CEIS funds come through Special School District, and that covers two middle school social workers and one bilingual therapist. As uh Mr. Eaton talked about, tier-three funding is new for next year, again, through Special School District. Uh, we have, uh, Julie has submitted, Ms. Hahn has submitted the, uh, our uh request to SSD, and that would replace uh the social worker who left the district, as well as provide some other therapy through CHANCE Coalition and possibly other partners outside the district. Ms. Hahn also got a, a DESI mental health grant approved for about seventy-five thousand dollars. And so again, we can use that for some outside uh agencies. We also uh have a BJC partnership grant that will cover a hundred percent of a therapist to meet the needs not covered by CARE STL at the middle school level. And then that uh mental health grant, her plan is the second year could cover that therapist in the second year. Uh, BJC, virtual counseling, there's no charge for um them working with students. And then we have a SIUE internship program that we pay about twenty-five thousand dollars out of our budget for two elementary art therapists for three days a week. And lastly, uh, just showing the board that uh we expect very, pretty stable enrollment um, and until that fifth year, but again, that's the fifth year. So um, we update those every year, and we'll look at those. So sure, but a decrease in the fifth year is not a large concern for me because it is five years out. I'll try to answer any questions the board might have.
Well, I think you earned your move it back. Uh, I just want to thank you. I know that last week, we were all concerned, and, you know, within a week, you guys went out and did some searching of how we can uh fulfill those pieces. So I just want to move you back and thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Back to Gilbride's leadership.
I did want one point of clarification. I had spoken with um Mr. Tom earlier about this. So on the virtual counseling that's offered in the district is not necessarily limited to twenty-five clients. Um, that's a small number when you think about the number of people in our district. It's basically based on capacity. Um, each of the therapists can take up to twenty-five clients. So if you can give more referrals, then that's, until they tell you all to stop, keep referring.
I think we all know Julie and-
Right.
It won't be a problem. She'll be, she'll be first in line. And pushing them to go to thirty or thirty-five probably.
Well, they're actually hiring more therapists um over the summer so that the total capacity will increase, but that twenty-five per therapist much.
That's great.
So basically, if there's a need, it'll be fulfilled, but you have to supply the need to show that it's there.
Right. So they tell you there's a wake list?
Madam President, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion unless there's any other questions?
Do you have any questions? So I got to do this part first.
Yep.
So we do have uh two members of the public at the moment, if they would have any questions during the hearing.
Okay.
So um, this is the time, the schedule for our hearing for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal budget year. Mr. Dwight Lindhorst has summarized the budget. Um, we will set a time limit for individual comments. That time limit will be three minutes. Um, the maximum time for public comments is, okay, I'm going to read this. So the President sets a time limit for individual comments, and they set a maximum time for public comments. A three-minute time limit for individuals and a thirty-minute limit for the hearing is recommended. The hearing concludes by the board president declaring the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget is closed. So we will open it up for public comments. If anyone has any public comments right now about the budget that Dwight has just suggested.
Good job on the budget. And I do feel like you, I don't know, I feel like it's always consistently, you know, I feel like you're not like, I know that other school districts are just like, oh, panic mode. And I just feel like you guys have a solid um agenda, or not agenda, but a very solid assessment that they do. Of course, you read that level of like, like, oh-
The audit.
With the audit, yes. Always like, good, good to know.
Thank you.
In all his coolos tonight, where?
Look at that. That's what you're a treasurer.
Yeah. I don't know what to do.
It's the suit.
It's the suit. The power suit, you got power suits on, huh? You got comments from the audience? I mean, crowded penthouse here.
Right.
So the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget is now closed.
So I'll pass the board for a budget approval at this point.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget proposal for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as presented.
Second.
Ms. Swans?
Yes.
Mr. Stargardt?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Zerigas Pemla?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight. I'm staying.
One more.
Bye, thank you, everybody.
So Mr. Dwight Lindhorst, three point zero nine, end of the year budget limits.
Yes, so this is a annual um item that the board approves. This uh just authorizes me to make uh adjustments to the budget, the current year budget, uh, to make sure we stay in compliance with state statutes uh and try to, and also with general accepted accounting principles, which the audit is based on. But I'll answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions about this?
So, and I don't mean anything bad by this. So if I'm reading this right, we're basically giving a blank checkbook and say, here, just make whatever adjustments. You don't present those adjustments to us, up here is what's being adjusted?
Yes, so every, every uh month, I send, I send that, that you guys approve on the consent agenda, the treasurer's report. And so in July, you would approve the final budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, if there are any adjustments.
So if you, we're giving the okay to make the adjustments here, but we still get to see them in July?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I, just, I trust you, I'm just-
It's, it's a great question, reading.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the financial, Chief Financial Officer, its treasurer, with approval from the superintendent, to make transfers and amendments as needed to comply with all applicable regulations, statutes, and general accepted accounting principles as recommended.
Second. Ms. Zerigas Pemla?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Stargardt?
Yes.
Ms. Swans?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to three point zero, personnel recommendations. Dr. Michael Smith?
Meeting board members?
Meeting.
Here to present personnel items one through seven to three. I'm open to any comments or questions you may have, ultimately asking for your approval.
Dr. Lance Chance, um, looking at number three and number seven, can you speak a little bit to which one of those we would be looking to actually replace versus the ones that would be coming captured through some of the grant funding that Dwight presented?
Sure. At this time, uh, we do plan to um replace the position for number three. That's a position, as, as you may know, typically covers the social-emotional support needs of students at the elementary level. So that is a position we intend to replace. Number seven is a position that we look to support in other ways through the grants that Dwight had described in the budget.
Uh, I'd just like to point out, I think this is a great thing. Uh, if you look at number sixty-seven through seventy-three, uh, National Board Certification, we got seven teachers that now have that on this, just on this, we've approved others before. So is, is this a, a growing trend amongst our, our staff, or what?
It is, since they've added National Board Certification for counselors, our counselors have really been aggressive in seeking that out. And doing the work that it takes to achieve that.
I just think this is great. This is, this- I just think this is great. This is, this is a lot of work. They, they have to do a lot of paperwork and everything. And this is a, this is a big thing to, for the teachers and for us.
I want to thank you, Dr. Lynch Chance, for your hard work on number one.
And I would like to say in person, I don't know if the board.
Yes.
Taking another opportunity?
Yes.
Madam President, I move that we accept the recommendations one through seventy-three as presented.
Second. Mrs. Solms?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alwoson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarek Estenblad?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We will move on to three point eleven, the Board of Education self-evaluation. Appreciate everyone getting their feedback in for this evaluation. Before we take a deeper dive into areas of opportunity, is there any, anything that anybody wants to highlight that they feel like is going well for us as a board? When we get into the actual evaluation?
I would just say after MSBA training, last Friday, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, last, I remember what day it is. Hearing the turmoil in some of the other districts and some of the disasters in their boards, I'm just very grateful that we have a board that works so well together and listening to each other and so.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. I, you know, a lot of times people don't realize that, you know, this is our second meeting of the month. And that the first meeting of the month is where we bring out the challenges and the questions, not just to each other, but also to our administrators. As you can see, they can answer some things within a week. And so I'm just thankful for that also. I think that's a good thing. And I think where we can continue to grow, I think about for my own self, is just even working more on my sportsmanship and how I can be better.
It's like a dive into the data that we have received. I do see the feedback based off of question two, which is the Board will maintain a process for salary discussion for certified and support personnel. Someone did put down, not sure what we, not sure if you can call, what we do a process discussion maybe. Don't know if anybody wants to give a deeper or give more feedback there or if we're comfortable to move on.
I put that.
Okay.
And I like having the discussion, okay? I know at our level, we, we don't want to, we shouldn't be doing the micromanaging, the, the setting the numbers ourselves. So when it comes to us, it ends up being more of a discussion between Dr. Lynch Chance, Dr. Gilbreith, and ourselves. We, we look at the numbers, we review things, but we don't set them. And I think that's a good thing, okay? But I, I guess I, when I filled this out, I thought, I don't want to just check the box and say we're doing a great job because then we just move on. But I think if we look at it and think about what we're doing and how we're doing it, it's, it's this team concept that we're not dictating to them. We're having a discussion with our team, with our superintendent on this. So it's not a process like you would think of, we sit down and do this. It's, it's their process that we get to sit down and review and discuss. And I like that. But I want to bring that out to say something.
Appreciate that. Other comments? We will move on. Looking at the comments based off of question four, which is the Board will approve salary schedules and set salaries for all school employees. There is one comment that references, yes, we have a process for setting salaries as clear and defined and allows us to make approvals easily. However, I sometimes wonder how much staff feedback slash data regarding salaries specifically for support staff we may be missing. I mean, nobody has to call up, but I just want to take a deeper dive if we're missing something in any of that.
Yeah, I think, so really, like, I tried to put a specific in there, you know, wondering about does pay come up in exit interviews with staff? Like, that's just one of those things that we don't, you know, we approve the, the hires and, you know, see the term date or, you know, separations and things. But just wondering, like, when is an appropriate time to kind of get that information? Just so that when we do come time to make salaries, again, I'm, I'm not, obviously, I don't claim to understand all of how the salaries are set or even the boundaries. But maybe that even would be helpful, like, to understand the boundaries of how to set support staff salaries. So, yeah, I mean, that was just something that came up.
Don't we have a survey that goes out to our staff and asks different questions and isn't salary a part of that?
For our exit interviews, yes.
But I mean, isn't there a yearly or bi-yearly survey that goes out?
No, not generally related, specific to salaries.
Well, not like in gym, like a whole.
We have a climate
Yes.
survey and there's the ability to add comments in the climate survey, but nothing very specific to salaries in that survey. So there may be opportunities there.
Yeah, I think that would be a good opportunity, to your point, to ask that before they leave. Like, we don't want to do it while they're leaving. Right. We would like to do it before they leave.
Yeah. And because I think, so I'm going to go off on a tangent, but, yeah. You know, the other thing was specifically, like, if we notice a pattern in a specific department or a position that maybe there's high turnover, you know, just being able to catch that maybe beforehand. So if we do have that new data with salary time satisfaction or, you know, ever being able to kind of, that would be another great piece of that data, so.
We do have quarterly meetings with our support staff representatives to discuss issues of concern. And from time to time, there is concern that a leader from the support staff group will share out regarding salary. It's not a consistent topic, but I can think of one group of support staff members that's been concerned recently. And correlated to term.
Yeah, I can imagine. So, yeah, so that was kind of my question or my feedback on this point is that, you know, I, I think I'm pretty clear on the process. It feels very thorough and it feels very thought out. And it does feel data-driven, but it just feels like there's also that, that case of data that I sometimes wish we would have more to better understand. And again, to be able to flux and see how can we, how can we meet those needs as well, so.
Other thoughts? Yes, sir.
I would, I would say that's why when we start the whole process, when we discuss salaries, we look at those at plus, education plus comparisons. So that we try to maintain as competitive salaries as we, as we can afford. Now, if individual employees, you know, may feel like they're not getting paid as much as, as they're worth and they could leave. But, you know, at least we're looking, us and the Board are looking at those salaries, knowing where they are and knowing that we want to stay fairly competitive. So that's the only thing that happens.
Yes, one recent example is of this year, we made a considerable adjustment to that process for our bus drivers. Because looking at the comparables, we noticed that our standing and competitiveness had shifted. We were near the top and all of a sudden we shifted to the bottom. And so we worked to make an adjustment there and then met with the drivers, explained what we were doing and why we were doing that. So that's just one example, but we haven't really, to your point, we haven't done so, I guess so many of their thoughts and perceptions of it prior.
We will move on to question eight. The Board does establish and provide the superintendent with the Board's priorities and parameters for the development and implementation of the budget. We do have some performance meets expectation most of the time. There's several comments on this one. To my knowledge, we have not done this. I think this should be a good part of the work session or even a retreat on the budget. It was illuminated during our June first meeting that perhaps we don't set the development of the budget as much as we think we do, but specifically in the area of building and maintenance. I'm not sure what the answer is here, just an observation. Well, the Board, so yeah, there's a lot of dialogue in this session, so just want to open it up. Lot of comments, did I say?
I would say the one thing that we always focus on is the balance of the budget, so the bottom line, right? So it's have, holding them accountable to fitting into that, you know. Sometimes I think, how deep in the weeds do we get? And that's where, you know, the bottom line is the balance. That's just the way I kind of look at it is, I feel it's, like, we don't really set the priorities and we don't sit down and say, you know, our priority is our children are getting educated and getting the needs that each of them need. And so how does that bottom line work? So we don't really dig into the individual line items to say, yes, it should be this amount, no, it should be this amount, that kind of thing. So it's just my point on it.
Yeah, I think I read it like, so to that point, it's like, should it even be evaluated? Like, should we change while we're being evaluated on that? Because I, to be honest, I read this with a new, like, mind or, you know, new vision this past week. Because I'm like, oh, I guess, not really, you know? As far as like establishing the, the priorities and parameters, I, I really don't. I don't feel like we necessarily establish the parameters or, or rather, the priorities. I think the parameters are pretty clear, like, yes, let's not go over where is this coming from, you know, all of that kind of thing. But priorities, that's a totally different topic. And I think a lot of the times we do just go, whatever you think the priorities are, how the priorities should be laid out. And we don't really establish that, I think. Or haven't had much dialogue on establishing priorities from my recollection on the Board, so.
I think that's always a good chance for review because, I mean, it's always been my understanding, even when my brother was on the Board, that it's about what is the most important thing for that student? It is the person, the teacher, the educator that is in the classroom of that student. And so I think it's like starting from the bare bones. It's always been like, who has that first touch? It's that teacher. A lot of our budget, a lot of times focuses right there on that student. And I think sometimes it's a good idea to bring that conversation back up to what makes up the budget primarily is our teacher salaries. That is the first step into a lot of it. It's so, like, very important. But I, I, I agree with you. But in the same respect, when we were starting to really pay down and our, it wasn't, the budget wasn't really getting healthy, when we all came together as a Board, we said, hey, we got to start cutting or doing something because we're not healthy right now. And they did it. And so we were able, we were what, at eighteen percent? Do you remember, Jennifer?
Yeah, I think we're like at eighteen, seventeen percent.
Yeah, it was.
Was that?
Yeah, that sounds right.
And so they started tightening the belt and it started to come back up again. So we weren't going to be paid down so low. So we do have some influence on it, but I think it's like one of those things where it happened five or six years ago, but yet it has that effect all the way down the road. It has a long-term effect.
Oh, with, with this, at one point, as, thinking about this earlier today, at one point, the Board would sit down at a work session or a retreat and, and if you got the budget document, it's like, well, a hundred and forty-something pages long. We would sit there and go from line item to line item to line item and have the CFO explain, why is it this much? Why is it that much? And reflecting back on that is because the level of trust from the Board to the superintendent and staff, that's what it was. That has changed drastically to where that level of trust has increased to a point where they know what we're looking for. They know what our criteria is, what the big picture is for us. And Dwight and Chris and their staff fill in those blanks. And we have that, I, I hope we have that level of trust with them, that they're doing the right thing. So there's no need for us to sit there for two or three hours saying, why did this increase by a hundred percent? Why did that increase by two hundred percent? Because then we are getting into the micromanaging and we were saying, in doing so, we don't really trust what you're, you're putting on the budget. So we want to check everything. And I'm really glad we're not there at that point anymore.
Ms. Glover Jones, this may be one that we reevaluate the wording of it and, you know, kind of get to the balanced budget instead of the micromanaging of the budget.
I just appreciate it's even, you know, I answered this question well before last week. And just to still see that when the Board says, hey, this is an issue, this is a priority for us, and we were able to turn things around, take some things out, have some conversations, hey, let's hold on this until we have more time to talk. And they were able to, they came back in tonight with, okay, here's how we're going to do this, here's, here's this, this, and this. And so, you know, it is that trust piece with the superintendent and without getting into the weeds and without us standing in his office every day, all day, with him looking over his shoulder and trusting him to do it, but he, but the administration hearing what we're saying and acting quickly on it, so.
Much appreciated.
Yes, that is appreciated. I do think, I guess it's often how you define the word priorities, because yes, we can influence, but if we're setting those priorities or establishing those priorities, that language is a little bit stronger, so I have that mark to look at as one of our questions to edit. Okay. Moving on to, let's see. This is question ten. The Board will adopt a fiscally responsible budget based on the district strategic plan, vision, and mission statement, equity statement, governance policies, and roles and responsibilities policies, and will continually monitor the fiscal health of the district. There is one rating that's just meets expectation most of the time. Did anybody want to give any feedback there? Is there necessarily anything that really stands out for me, but I don't want to overlook someone's comments? Hearing that, I will move on. And that's it. Any other feedback or areas of opportunity that we may not have highlighted here or someone wants to share?
I would just like to point out that question number twelve is about having our audit, so you brought that up. We'll do that.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for filling us out and being willing to share your comments. So we are going to move on to three point zero, three point twelve, to Board member comments. So if we have any additional comments that we'd like to share?
I just want to reinforce how amazing last Thursday was over at the CoCare Food Pantry. It was incredible. It was just so inspiring and I've been passing up a little QR codes, telling people to sign up. So, yeah, it was just, it was just wonderful. It just fills me with pride to know. And I feel so much more confident to tell people in the community about the pantry and visiting it. the community about the pantry and visiting it, you know, so, just the whole thing, the mission around treating folks with dignity and just having that real sense of community was wonderful, it was good for my soul, so just wanted to share that.
I'd like to build off of that, because one thing I'd like to share is, I don't know if remember the year, and somebody can probably tell me, but it was years ago, we all sat in this room, and we were talking about where we were going to put the buses. And at that time, the food pantry was getting ready to close their doors, and it was the unlackling spot. And because they could no longer afford it and everything else, and this board came together and said, it is extremely important for us to have that pantry, so we need a place that not only holds our buses and our bus depot for all of our bus drivers, but also holds that pantry. And so I give huge kudos to everybody who worked to get that over in Baptist, because that was the big win for us, and so I just want to thank the board at that time, and the content, the new board now, for continuing to support that, because that is so big for our community, I can't imagine what's not happening.
As we're talking of the food pantry and that, I also want to remind everybody that Monday is the Pride and Promise Golf Tournament, and Pride, continue to support Pride and Promise, who does so much inside of our district, and so many opportunities that are given because of that, so.
Today, we met a young man here that's going to be an assistant principal at food, and it's, I know he was not rehearsed, and I know you guys don't do that, but the things he said was just everything we need. And I'm really happy that we're finding young people like him to come here and help us, work with us, and work for us, to take care of our kids, and everything he said, I just, I just want to say, you know, that, that is, that is what we want, right there. So again, thank you very much, Mr. Jones, Dr. Jones, for seeking out and finding people like this. The people are going to what make, is making the difference, and what will make our difference, and Putridner above all the other school districts in this area, because of the love of our kids. And I appreciate that for everyone here.
I did want to also share, I really enjoyed the graduation ceremony this year, it's very clear that, Dr. Thomas Snyder, we're actually talking about this, but it is clear that Dr. Baywood has become more comfortable in facilitating and leading that process and ceremony, it's exciting to see all of the kids, the young people, the young people who say, and get their diplomas, lots of happiness, it's just a good time to kind of end the year and just really be in that space with our graduates and their families and just hear them celebrate, and so appreciate the team and all their efforts to make sure that that happens successfully, it's just a good time.
To piggyback off that real quick, I don't want to take too much time, but hearing some of our students talk about the impact the teachers have made, so that was incredibly touching to hear, that we have teachers that don't just come to school to get a paycheck, they're here to, for a student to say, you saved my life, was just a very meaningful statement.
Keep it together.
I'm not going to talk about graduating. Ooh, they have a crying.
What board are you here?
No, I know, I, I looked at Jennifer, said next, she goes, don't even, I was like, okay.
I also want to thank Dr. Jones for attending it tonight, and Dr. Kilbride, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
We are going to move on, if there's no other comments, to our consent agenda items. I did want to highlight two things before I look for a motion. We did have one board member that reached out regarding a question with some funds that we have to send out due to some of our students that go outside of our district for transportation needs as part of the McKinney-Ventle Act, so just want to keep everybody aware of that, that is a part of our, underneath our warrants. And then also, the 4.03, the homeless migration, if anybody got a chance to really look at that, our numbers are increasing in that area for Putridner, so just be mindful of that, and, you know, as we're thinking about our budget and our priorities, like, how are we helping support in those spaces, because that is most definitely a problem for our students, and I wish.
And are we seeing a larger increase at the Walco Center?
So, if you, I don't know whether to report, but.
That's a.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yeah, I thought so.
Okay.
Madam President, I move that we approve consent agenda items 4.01 through 4.10.
Second. Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez, yes. And I will vote yes. So moving on to 5.01, looking for a motion to reconvene in closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to reconvene in closed session for state statute 610021 for the purpose of a discussion of agenda items.
Second. Mrs. Monas?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez, yes. And I will vote yes. We can do a five-minute break? Five minutes.